Regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order on Tuesday, February 11th, 2025, at 7:30 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber, which has been duly noticed in two places, including the city's website in accordance with the requirements of RSA 91A. Prayer will be offered tonight by City Clerk Dan Healy, and Alderman Ben Clemens will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance, please.
Alderman O'Brien.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Here.
Alderman Rand.
Here.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Here.
Alderman Govea.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Alderman Sullivan.
Here.
Alderman Clemens.
Here.
Alderman Senate.
Here.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderman Tebow.
Here.
Alderman Cle.
Here.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Here.
Thirteen present and two absent.
Also joining us this evening is Mayor Jim Donchis and Corporation Counsel Steve Oldman. Mayor, did you wish to address the board this evening?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. First, I wanted to take a minute to talk about the upcoming budget and to thank the members of the Budget Committee for meeting with members of our budget team last night to talk about the way in which you would like to see the budget go. Of course, the making of a budget is always a partnership between me as the mayor and you as the Board of Aldermen. You, the board, have, I propose, but you have final say. And so we are always very interested in hearing what you are thinking concerning how we should try to balance, and this is what every budget does, the need for the lowest tax rate we can possibly get with the need for critical services, schools, police, fire, public works, and so on. But two messages, I think, became clear last night. Number one, you would like to receive the budget earlier than we had planned. We had planned for the first Tuesday, the first meeting of the Board of Aldermen in May for introduction, which is what we've done, you know, for some years now. And it's the same date that I used to live with as a member of the Budget Committee when, in the former administration, when I was an Alderman. But you'd like a little more time. So we believe that we can get you the numbers, the detailed numbers, by the first meeting in April. You may not get at that point the verbal, you know, the explanation, all of the kind of elucidation of what the departments do at that point, but we can supplement that as we go along so that you have that well before the, you know, the conclusion of the budget season at the beginning of June. So we're working towards getting you the budget on the first meeting in April, which I believe is April 8th. Now, the other thing that we discussed, or that was discussed last night with the members of the budget team, is, was the level of the budget and the guidelines that we might give to departments. We talked initially about a 4% guideline, which would enable all departments to maintain this current level of service. But, you know, in recognition of the fact that times are tough for many people, property taxes are high and difficult to pay, we, you know, I considered, and we showed you, the Budget Committee, what a 3.5% guideline would accomplish. And I think there was sentiment expressed that you'd like to see it lower than that. So today, we were debating between, should we go to 3 or 2.5? And I think I've decided that we will give a 3.5%, 3% guideline to the departments. Now, you should understand that that means that there will probably be, let me go back one step. One issue that we faced this year that we have not before is that the SURF budget, but for those who are not initiated into those acronyms, the budget for the purchase of equipment, police cars, fire vehicles, not fire trucks, but other vehicles, public works vehicles, garbage trucks, everything like that, was not, there was no SURF budget, there was no budget for that in the fiscal '25 budget. Because we, in fiscal '24, we did it through the escrow process, through the supplemental appropriations, which we'd done for a few years, excuse me, and in fiscal '25, the current year, there was nothing in the budget. And we, through our discussions with you, decided not to seek a supplemental appropriation or a escrow or anything for the equipment, which means if you want to buy equipment during fiscal '26, that is the year we will be facing, the budget that you'll be receiving, you got to put it in the budget. So that is, in addition to the budget, a new item over and above what's ever been there before. Now, the estimate for SURF, capital, you know, equipment purchases, $6 million, but I think we can cut that down. We need police cruisers. There's a lot of stuff that, equipment that's 20 years old that really needs to be replaced, but we can probably get by without everything. So we might be able to cut that by a million or two from the $6 million estimate. And if we put out a 3% guideline, that will help us keep the budget down. But with the equipment in the budget, you should realize that 3% will likely result in a reduction of core services and a reduction of personnel. And some of you are shaking your heads, no, but why? Because the, there are contracts in place, which have been approved by you, and I'm not arguing with any of that, which exceed 3% for wages. For example, right on tonight's budget is R24-127, which is a collective bargaining agreement. Now, that includes a raise for those employees of 3.5% for fiscal '26. So for that group of employees, in order to reach a 3% guideline, you cannot, you know, that doesn't, the addition doesn't work. You can't raise wages by 3.5% and have the budget only go up three because almost the entire budget is wages and benefits. Now, we also have other items that are fixed and probably can't be controlled with 3%, like the school department has a busing contract that's definitely going up way more than 3%. They have only a single provider and they can't control that. We have fuel costs, other things like that, that utilities that are likely to go up more than 3%. But you, I'm just saying, it's, you know, this is never an easy process. And when you receive a budget which includes a 3% raise for our biggest departments, school, police, fire, you may hear from those departments that they can't do that with their current workforce. Now, we'll see, but maybe they can make those changes. Hopefully, they can. But again, we are jointly, together, always trying to consider whether, every year, how to balance the need for the lowest tax rate we can get with the need for the services that people rely on. Just an additional point there. I mean, I understand, and I know you understand, that after, especially after these revaluations, people's taxes have gone up, and many people, working paycheck to paycheck, are struggling to pay. But here in New Hampshire, we do have a system which results in high property taxes. Our tax rate is $1,590, but if you believe it or not, compared with other cities, it is relatively low. Manchester is like above 19, Concord is 22 something, Keene is like 20, you know, near, I think, 30. So many cities have higher taxes than we do. Now, people struggle even more, I suppose, to pay taxes in those communities. That isn't to say that we should not work as hard as we can to keep the taxes as low as we possibly can, but we are given a system, Nashville is not alone, we are given a system that mandates, basically, high property taxes because the school aid we receive is very, very limited. And I just remind people who are having questions about, you know, what they'd like to see us do, you and I, the Board of Aldermen, worked together in the fall of '23, two years ago, taxes went up less than 1%. I think it went from 1807 to 1819 or whatever. Last year, a little more than that, but, so when we can deliver, we try to do that. And this year, again, going back to the beginning, without the need to put equipment in the budget, you know, we could come in, again, very low, but that's going to definitely, you know, cause some escalation of the tax rate. So that's, those are my thoughts about the budget. We will come in, we can get you the budget by April 8th. It will be numbers only, but it will be complete numbers, and we will get you the explanation, the language explaining the, what each department does and all that. I think that's a good addition to the budget, but you won't get that on the first introduction. One more thing briefly, Madam President. I wanted to mention O2434, which has to do with the parking lot in the mill yard over by the Pine Street Extension. I'm going to suggest that that be sent back to committee. The, this has been, has a long history with this parking lot, which I won't get into right now, but the, currently, it is free, the only parking lot that's free, really, in downtown. And the, of course, the property owners were told that the changes incorporated in that ordinance, O2434, were, would be coming, but they, it doesn't seem that they passed that on to the tenants, the smaller businesses that are there. So in view of that fact, maybe we should send this back to committee and, you know, give a little more time. And in addition, there will be some very significant changes coming in that area. BIDA is working on a redevelopment of that parcel and an adjacent one, and there could be other changes nearby. NIMCO is one of those changes, the development of the NIMCO site into, you know, 250-some units of housing. Anyway, that's, those are my comments for this evening, Madam President, and I'm glad to be with you again, of course.
Responses to the remarks of the mayor on this side? Anyone? Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam President. I just wanted to thank the mayor for listening to us. I mean, it was just last night that we had that three-hour conversation in budget, and, you know, there was some strong language about getting the budget before the time that we had heard we might get it. So I really appreciate that. It's tough, you know, showing last night that 10% is going up for benefits and healthcare, and that's, that's going to be a big part of this budget that's going to be hard to deal with because you can't not give healthcare to the city's employees. So hopefully, we can get creative with the budget, and getting the numbers earlier gives us more time to think of different things, but, and all of us, whether it's the city departments, whether it's the Aldermen and Alderwomen, whether it's you, the mayor, I think, you know, if there was a year to get creative and to really look over this budget and try to make it the best we can, this would be the year because we don't really, we have a lot of uncertainty with the federal, federal money and state money, and, you know, we rely on that. And there's things, you know, we talked last night, if we lost some federal money, we could possibly lose busing in the city for, you know, our city bus. So, you know, there's things we really have to look at and make sure we're doing the right things. And I'm never advocating for personnel loss, but we want to look at maybe some personnel that isn't in those roles today because they're empty and we haven't filled them, maybe we shouldn't fill them next year. So thank you for looking at that, and I appreciate it, and looking forward to budget season.
Alderman Clemens.
Yeah, thank you. Just in response, I'm not on the Budget Committee. I did see the meeting from last night, but I do want to say, you know, having served on the board as long as I have, we have had difficult budgets in the past where, to what Alderman Tebow alluded to, we can reduce through attrition personnel. And my preference would be that if we were going to cut, that that's how we did it, without laying anybody off. And so I can tell you right now that I will not vote for a budget that lays people off. You can count me as a no. But if we can creatively reduce personnel through areas that are not currently filled or retirement and things like that, then I think you might gain my support.
Anyone else?
I think that can be accomplished. I mean, when I say reduction of personnel, there's always turnover, so there's always, unless it's something huge, there's usually enough positions that, were you to reduce positions, you're not actually laying, telling someone to leave, you're simply not filling a job that is not currently occupied.
Anyone else responses to the remarks of the mayor? Okay. Recognition period.
None.
Discussions or presentations?
None.
Reading minutes of previous meetings. There being no objection, I'll declare the minutes of the special and regular Board of Aldermen meetings of January 14th and January 27th, 2025, be accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communication has been received from Tim Cummings, Director of Administrative Services, regarding communication and request for approval on Hunt Memorial Building renovation.
There being no objection, I'll accept the-
Madam President?
Oh, Alderman Govea.
I have a question about that communication. At the bottom of it, there was a request for a motion to be made?
I don't have it in front of me, I'm sorry.
So at the bottom, there's a, it's, excuse me, it says, "Request motion to approve moving forward with Hunt Memorial Building renovations as previously planned."
Are you making that motion?
No, this is just what the communication says. I was wondering if we were taking up the communication or if we were just placing it on file.
Alderman Dowd.
It was explained last night by Director Cummings that we're in a position to proceed with that repair, but that depends on some grant money that, you know, based on what's happening in DC, it could be up in the air. So the question to be answered is, do we want to proceed with the repair and take the risk? If we don't get the grant, we have to fund that or not?
Well, and I guess that is, Madam President, if I can, that would be my question of, by accepting this communication, are we making that call right now?
We are not.
Okay.
We're accepting it and placing it on file. We are not authorizing any expenditures.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome. Period public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. I have Dr. Cynthia Whitaker.
Good evening, President, Mayor, Alderman. I'm Dr. Whitaker. I'm the President and CEO at Greater National Mental Health, and I am indebted to some folks that let us know that the parking lot at Pine Street Extension was on your agenda today because we had no idea. So yes, if, we were asked by a number of folks, did we know, and if by signs that said "coming soon" for years and years that sat there, did we expect it? Did we know it was going to a year-long study? Yes. But did we know it was in committee? No. Did we know it was coming to vote? No. I did submit a letter. I don't know if folks have already received a copy. I brought some in case folks hadn't. I also know that Mike Affleberg of the United Way submitted a letter as well on our behalf, just speaking about the hardship it would be for us, also wanting to create a budget where I don't need to lay folks off, also not certain about the funding coming in from the federal government or our state. Needing to think about more increased payment related to parking is, is hard for us to contemplate at this moment. In addition to that, that is the area where we provide crisis services. So it is where we have crisis apartments. It is where our hub is for mobile crisis, so our staff are in and out of there all of the time. It is where we see folks for first appointments after hospitalization, so to help people get out of hospital faster, we're seeing them there in our crisis place. And so people that are coming to that specific agency location are often those in the most crisis. And so for them to navigate parking would not be something, and so it would be something we would be working with the city on to take on, onto our budget, which would be really hard for us at this time-
One minute.
-given our own uncertainty. So I just want to thank you again for reaching out and asking if we knew, because we did not, and I'm always open to questions and having any conversation with any of you at any time about what we do in the community.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Ken Lewis.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to be here, my first time, so it's good to see the city at work.
Name an address for the record, please.
What's that?
You name an address for the record.
Ken Lewis, I live in Miramar, but our agency, Hartz, Peer Support Center, is in five Pine Street Extension, has been there since 2009, since we rolled out an independent 501(c)(3) out of Harbor Care. We've been there since 2009. We serve the, we're a community-based program that serves homeless, mental health, substance use, and anywhere else, mostly that there is the library or us during the day, or they're wandering your streets. So we serve a big population down there. Right now, there is a lot of homeless folks down there that's transitioned over to us because we're centrally located and we're able to support them in times of need. Just reiterating what Cynthia Whitaker talked about, we are open during the day, but the city has allowed us to expand in 2013 and put a two-bedroom respite that's an alternative to hospitalization for people that don't qualify or don't want to be hospitalized or locked up. It's a community-based program, but it's peer model, lived experience. And the other one we opened in the middle of COVID was a three-bedroom short-term transitional stay that is in that same location. And again, it would be a very big hardship for us, lower-income folks that use, majority, 80% of the folks that come there are low-income, and would be a restraint for them to park. I mean, we're limited parking as it is, so it was nice to see that we were able to use the parking spaces. And most of the-
One minute.
-programs in there are very small businesses. It's, it might be in the center of the city, but it's in a spot, they used to call that "the hidden mall," and that's because nobody could find it, and nobody knew where it was. So it's very difficult to navigate, so, I mean, there's only one, I think the mosque meets morning, noon, and evening, and that's your biggest traffic in there, so I just don't know if that, you know, I know you guys are looking for income and things, but I'm just here to express the concern we have for staff and for clients that come in from all over the state as well as our region. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Alderman Jettie.
I didn't catch the organization that Mr.-
Oh, I'm sorry. Hartz Peer Support Center.
Thank you.
Communications requiring final approval.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donchis regarding multi-year contract award, software subscription services with UKG Chronos Systems.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to motion to accept, place on file, and approve a five-year contract renewal for the continued operation of UKG software subscription services with UKG Chronos System LLC in the amount of $118,020 annually. Funding will be through Department 120 Technology Maintenance Fund, General Fund/55 Other Fund, I'm sorry, Other Services.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donchis regarding multi-year contract award, software subscription services for UKG Telestaff.
Alderman Govea.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to accept, place on file, and approve a five-year renewal contract for the continued operation of UKG Telestaff for Fire and Police Department Software Subscription Services with UKG Chronos Systems LLC in the amount of $33,108 annually. Funding will be through Department 120 Technology Maintenance Fund, General Fund, 55 Other Services.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donchis regarding million-dollar contract award, paving program contract one, change order six.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to accept, place on file, and approve change order number six for the paving program contract with Continental Paving Incorporated in the amount of $1,897,880. Funding will be through Department 160 Admin Engineering Fund Bond 54 Property Services.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donchis regarding million-dollar contract award, paving program contract two, change order five.
Alderman Clemens.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to accept, place on file, and approve change order number five for the paving program with Sunshine Paving Corporation in the amount of $4,735,704.75. Funding will be through Department 160 Admin Engineering Fund Bond 54 Property Services, $3,920,704.75, and Wastewater 54 Property Services, $400,000, and Contribution Trust Fund 54 Property Services for $415,000.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donchis regarding multi-year contract award, turf tank two pro package subscription.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to accept, place on file, and approve a three-year lease subscription of a 2025 turf tank with turf tank in the amount of $15,996 annually. Funding will be through the Department 177 Pocs Funds General Fund/54 Property Services.
You've heard the motion. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Petitions.
Petition for street acceptance saddleback drive.
There being no objection, I'll accept the petition for street acceptance, refer it to the Committee on Infrastructure, and schedule a public hearing for Wednesday, March 26, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber. Nominations, appointments, and elections.
Board of Registars, Adriana Lopera Espatia, reapportment, term to expire December 31, 2027, 15 Hanover Street, Nashville, New Hampshire, 03060. Conservation Commission, Dale Carruth, new appointment, term to expire March 25, 2028, 65 Elgin Street, Nashville, New Hampshire, 03060. Zoning Board of Adjustment, Rob Shaw, reapportment, term to expire March 11, 2027, 14 Sweet William Circle, Nashville, New Hampshire, 03062.
There being no objection, I'll accept the appointments by the mayor as read and refer them to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. Reports of committees, there being no objection, I will declare the report of the January 8, 202- Reports of committees, there being no objection, I will declare the report of the January 8, 2025 Committee on Infrastructure be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the January 15 Planning and Economic Development Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the January 22, 2025 Finance Committee be accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of mayor's appointments.
Cable Television Advisory Board.
There being no objection, I'll confirm the reappointment of Cole Morgan, 20 Lock Street, Nashua, with a term to expire March 31, 2027, to the Cable Television Advisory Board. I don't see Cole here this evening. He will be sworn in at a later date.
Nashua Airport Authority.
There being no objection, I will confirm the reappointment of Jessica Holland, 34 Franklin Street, Number 442, Nashua, with a term to expire December 31, 2029, to the Nashua Airport Authority. Is Jessica here this evening? She'll be sworn in at a later date.
Trustee of the Trust Funds and Capital Reserve Funds.
There being no objection, I will confirm the new appointments of David Fredette, 4 Henry Drive, Number 408, Nashua, with a term to expire March 1, 2027, Kristen Kane, 14 Wood Street, Nashua, with a term to expire February 1, 2027, to the trustee of the Trust Funds and Capital Reserve Funds. I know Mr. Fredette couldn't make it this evening, but is Kristen here this evening? They will both be sworn in at a later date.
201 Main Street Financing Corp.
There being no objection, I will confirm the following reappointments to the 201 Main Street Financing Corp. Deb Novotny, 65 McKenna Drive, Nashua, and Rich Lannan, 11 McGrath Road, Pelham, both with terms to expire December 31, 2028. And I don't see either of them in the audience. They will be sworn in at a later date.
201 Main Street Real Estate Corp.
There being no objection, I will confirm the following reappointments to the 201 Main Street Real Estate Corp. Deb Novotny, 65 McKenna Drive, Nashua, Rich Lannan, 11 McGrath Road, Pelham, and William Berry, 161 Kinsey Street, Nashua, all with terms to expire December 31, 2028. And I know that Mr. Berry is here, so please come forward for the oath of office. Or you can come right up here. Thank you.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a director of the 201 Main Street Real Estate LLC. Corp, according to the best of your abilities and agreeableness to the rules and regulations of the city charter and the constitutional laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help you God.
I do.
Thank you.
Board of Registars.
There being no objection, I will confirm the following new appointment of Jennifer McCormick, 43 Lund Street, Nashua, with a term to expire February 11, 2028, to the Board of Registars. And I don't see her here this evening. She'll be sworn in at a later date. Business unfinished at previous meetings. The first one, Resolution 25-121, we have a meeting scheduled to discuss that on 310-25, so we will not be taking that up this evening. 121, I'm sorry, yeah. Resolution 25-125 is on hold. So Alderman Lopez, you didn't want to take action on that this evening, did you?
No, we still haven't actually gotten the fiscal allocation we need.
Okay. And Resolution 24-109. It's still tabled. Okay, unfinished business resolutions.
Second reading of R-24-118 relative to the supplemental appropriation of $120,836.27 of fiscal year 2025 unanticipated revenue into fund number 7024 opioid abatement expendable trust fund.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-24-118 by roll call pursuant to Charter Section 49.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the rule?
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
14 yays, 0 nays.
That motion carries. Resolution 24-118 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-24-119 relative to the acceptance of $75,000 of anticipated grant funds and to accept and appropriate an additional $25,000 of unanticipated grant funds for a housing opportunity plan grant from the New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority.
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-24-119 by roll call pursuant to Charter Section 49.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the rule?
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Got no.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
13 yays, 1 nay.
That motion carries, and Resolution 24-119 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-25-122 authorizing deed waivers for certain properties.
Alderman Dowd.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-25-122.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion. Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I supported this in committee. I sponsored it. And we had a great discussion with our tax collector, Don Enright, going through the process of what this meant. And she detailed some numbers that I thought were pretty impressive because there were a total of 120 properties that came up that had to be deeded. There's a subset, and that's what we're voting on tonight, that because of certain situations that are beyond our control, be it environmental issues or whatnot, you know, if I could be so, just to say, the juice isn't worth the squeeze. If we were to take that, it would cost us a lot of money to mitigate that. So we're going to set those off to the side. She told us that she's going to work with, you know, be it the federal level, be it environmental services, be it our own code enforcement, to help bring those properties more in line. And she did let us know that there were 28 properties out of the 120 that deeded, and the rest paid their taxes. So I was really happy to hear that as well. So I look forward to supporting this tonight. Thanks.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Resolution 24-119 is declared duly adopted. I'm sorry. Resolution 25-122 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-25-123 authorizing the mayor to enter into First Amendment to air right lease with Nashua Apartment Ventures LLC.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to move for final passage of R-25-123.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and Resolution 25-123 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-25-124 authorizing the mayor to enter into Second Master Development Agreement amended with Nashua Apartment Ventures LLC.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to motion for final passage of R-25-124.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and Resolution 25-124 is declared duly adopted. Unfinished business ordinances.
Second reading of O-24-034 assigning the Pine Street Extension Parking Lot to Zone 3.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion at this time to rerefer to the Committee on Infrastructure.
Motion is to rerefer. Discussion? Alderman Senate.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to support this motion. I want to thank the mayor for bringing this up during his initial comments. This is actually a motion I came in here prepared to make if there was maybe a more favorable look on this. I happen to be at the Committee on Infrastructure. I don't serve on that committee, but I happened to be there back in October when this was first tabled. It sat on the table for close to four months before being brought up at the most recent meeting. And at the time that it was tabled, I was under the impression that a more robust discussion about the management of this lot and the options that may be available to us was desired. And then I was very surprised to see that while there was a brief discussion, that discussion didn't really happen. My perception of the last infrastructure meeting was that. We reviewed why we put it on the table. We got a brief recap of what we had received back in October, and then it was referred to the Board of Aldermen. I still share a lot of the concerns that my colleagues articulated back in October in regard to the proximity of Mine Falls Park, the lack of proximity to downtown proper, and now more so, especially with what we heard tonight in public comment, the awareness of the businesses that are operating in that area. Because we were told back in October, and we were told again at the end of January, that, well, of course, the tenants are aware those signs have been up forever, and no, there won't be any surprises. That's clearly not the case. So I think that there's more work to be done. I think that there is a solution, given what we know about this lot, given that we've heard from our own parking study that, in general, it gets about 30% of its maximum use. I think there's a solution that could satisfy all the desires here, from the tenants of the businesses there, the city's desire to generate revenue, and I would say, overall, the desire to maintain free and unfettered access to Mine Falls for folks living downtown. And so I will wholeheartedly support sending this back to infrastructure, and I look forward to a much more robust discussion. Thank you.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President, and I, my colleagues spoke very well. I am on the Infrastructure Committee, and I do think that we did have some conversation. And we did ask the question as to whether or not they did know that this was happening. And I think there was a miscommunication because we were under the impression that they did know. That's not the case. There obviously was a miscommunication. The tenants did not know. And it's, again, as an Alderman, and I think we've all learned, just because the owners know that something has happened, it does not necessarily mean that the tenants of the building know that it's happening. And I think that's exactly what is happening. And I appreciate my colleagues and the mayor sending this back. It does, it should go back to infrastructure. It does need more work. And I think my colleague articulated it very, very, quite well. They did say that only 30% of this lot does get used. And I did ask whether, how we were going to handle the mouth of the, of Mine Falls, because that was there. And that was a concern of mine, too. We don't charge at Lincoln Park. We don't charge at any of the other ones, which is one of my concerns. So I am glad it's going to infrastructure, and I look forward to having that discussion there. So, thank you.
Alderman Lopez.
First, just a clarifying question to the President. If, again, do we know when the next Infrastructure Committee will be?
Donovan can tell us. The keeper of the calendar.
Wednesday, February 26.
Okay, so that's very inconvenient for me because I'm going to be in Honduras from the 20th to the 27th. So I was ready to fight this crazy tonight because the way that it came back and the impact that it would have on some of those tenants, I think, is a great disservice to the city. I don't want to see that area gentrified now that we have new businesses coming in. Let's start charging money for things that businesses have relied upon for years, particularly to do a lot of work for the city. So as was mentioned, Hartz does a lot of work for the city, and it's a very essential resource to a lot of people who don't have anywhere else to go. And Greater National Mental Health, I can't even begin to talk about the crises that they handle on a regular basis, knowing that, you know, I know from personal experience, having worked there four years ago, you know, the crisis intervention supports that they're doing there, and the other kind of work that they're doing specifically in that site is incredibly important to the city. If we make it unsustainable for them, we don't have the capacity to meet anything approaching what they are doing. So I think those are some major considerations that the Infrastructure Committee should consider. I would ask if it's possible to maybe plan to have it at the following Infrastructure Committee meeting because it's my understanding that there is an urgent need to put more parking in the ground. And I think the city particularly has moved fairly aggressively with parking over the last couple of months, changing a lot of things, putting a lot of downtown businesses in a difficult spot by raising fees. It was somewhat referenced in Dr. Whitaker's letter, which I would definitely recommend everybody read because some good points were being made there. So if I am not able to attend, I hope I'm being heard tonight. I do think this needs to be very carefully approached, and I wouldn't just lump it in with another zone. I would do something specific to that area if we do anything at all. That being said, I will support the effort to table, mostly because I'm not going to get a chance to vote against it, but also because I think the community is now more aware of it and the tenants are going to be able to articulate for themselves what their problems with this would be.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I echo that I think the next infrastructure meeting might be too quick for this in general. Whether Alderman Lopez can be there or not, I think it's too quick. Sounds like it's an issue that's going to need some talking and some work, and I don't think, I think that's going to be too quick. On the way here, I got a call from a constituent, not even my constituent, but they just called me and said they were concerned that people that went to some of these services were going to have to pay, and they might not be able to afford to pay to park there. So I was planning on voting no on this tonight, so I am more than happy to see it re-referred. You know, the option to table it to a certain date could be there as well, but definitely needs to go back to committee. Thank you.
Alderman Clemmons.
So I, too, will not be here that last week in February. It's definitely something that, you know, interests me, although I'm not on the Infrastructure Committee. I made the, I was going to vote against this tonight. I had made the, my opinion known at the meeting in October that I thought that this was going to unfairly, was going to unfairly burden lower-income folks and businesses that are nonprofits or small businesses themselves. We're thinking about putting in low-income housing right adjacent to that parking lot, and that would mean that people who lived there would have to pay a fee to park. And I think that that goes against the entire point and purpose of those type of housing. So I welcome more discussion on it. I don't know that I could support it with paid parking. So what will come of it, I don't know, but I'm always happy to discuss and so happy to move it back to the Committee on Infrastructure.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, as the current Chair of Infrastructure, I prefer it go to the, not the next meeting, but the one after that. We have two or three things at the next Infrastructure meeting on the agenda already. So moving it to March is probably a good thing. And I would suggest that staff talk to the tenants and find out maybe some alternatives that we can consider so that we're not doing all the groundwork ourselves at the meeting, that we can have some information that we can use to make a decision.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. I, too, will support it going back to.
I, too, will support it going back to committee. There is an aspect of, you know, the cost of doing business, but these businesses have been unfairly impacted by the grant freezes that are happening and the litigation on whether money should go to them or not. And you just heard that they need to know when it comes to budget planning. And a small thing that we could do is just hold this off until we do a better job at it at committee or we get some clarity on where grants are coming from in the future.
Okay, the motion is to re-refer. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Ordinance 2434 is re-referred to the Committee on Infrastructure.
Second reading of O-25-047 amended, establishing a new parking zone for the parking garages.
Alderman Clemmons?
Thank you, Madam President. I move to amend O-2547 by replacing it with the golden rod copy of proposed amendments made at the Committee on Infrastructure. And I'd like to speak just briefly.
Alderman Clemmons?
The, I'd actually ask to, I don't remember what the, what it was. I know it was a clerical thing. So, I'm not sure if somebody who was actually at the meeting could speak to that, what the change is.
Alderman Jettie?
Thank you. I'm not on the committee, but I was there. And it was just that the words, so I think in the first section, 320-47, sub-paragraph A, sub-paragraph 3, sub-paragraph lowercase a, said, "Parking fees in subsection A3 above," and it said, "Which includes the metered spaces in Elm Street and High Street parking garages,"
Oh, okay.
"shall not be enforced from December 15 through January 1 every year." And then in sub-paragraph 5, it repeated that same language.
Okay.
And so, the parking manager told us that it was their intention to eliminate, "which includes the metered spaces in Elm Street and High Street parking garages" from sub-paragraph A above and put them into sub-paragraph A below. So, it's just to strike the extra language. That was a clerical error.
Thank you for the explanation.
Motion is to amend. Discussion on the motion to amend. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Alderman Clemmons?
Thank you. I move for final passage of O-2447 as amended and I'd like to speak to that.
Alderman Clemmons?
Thank you. So, this ordinance, what this ordinance does is it will allow anyone to park anywhere in either the Elm Street Garage or the High Street Garage for 75 cents an hour, Monday through Friday. And then it would be free to park on Saturday, Sunday, holidays, and snow emergencies. So, we've received some complaints that the parking garages have been turned into permit-only on the upper levels, even at night, when previously that they, that they were not. And so, this removes that and actually opens up the parking garages even more than they've ever been in recent past so that anybody can park anywhere in the garage. And I think this, this is a matter of fairness. We passed, in my opinion, we've passed a $15 million bond to upgrade those garages. And that cost is being paid by every taxpayer. So, in my opinion, every taxpayer should be able to go into that garage and park if they want to. And this allows that to happen. In addition to that, we are charging now, Monday through Friday, 24/7, 75 cents an hour, up to nine hours a day. This is going to help offset some of those bonds, some of the bond payments. And I think that's an important thing that we need to, to consider. So, for those reasons, that is why I brought this forward. I think it's a matter of fairness, but I also think it will increase our revenue, which will help us in turn pay for some of the bonds that we passed as well. The idea, and one further note, is that the idea of this is an incremental change so that eventually, at some point, we might add Saturdays to the mix, maybe Sundays, I don't know. But the idea is that, you know, as, as time goes on, we want to be able to get more parking revenue out of the garages. We want the people who pay there, who park there, to be able to pay for the bond that upkeeps the garages. And I think this strikes a good balance. It doesn't throw everything all at once to people. We just start Monday through Friday paying and we still have the weekends for free. So, it strikes a balance and I, I hope I can get everyone's support on this.
Alderman Dowd?
Yeah, I've had input from the businesses and some of the workers in the area of the Elm Street Garage that are concerned that they're going to be paying substantially more to park there. And, and I'm just concerned that, that, you know, I don't have any concern with regular parking, but I think we perhaps ought to consider the people that work in the area, particularly people that get out late at night from the restaurants, who because of cost might park further away and be maybe more concerned about their safety. To me, I would like to consider, I'm not suggesting any particular fee, but suggest that, that, that the companies in the, in the immediate vicinity of the garage, and the restaurants in the vicinity of the garage, perhaps get a, a reduced rate since they're there every single day and that's where they have to park. I know one of the people who got in touch with me was concerned about a substantial increase on yearly cost of parking. I understand parking normally for other people that aren't there all the time, to help get revenue to offset the bond is fine, but I think we ought to consider the people that work in the vicinity of the garage.
Alderman Clay and then Alderman Clemmons?
Thank you. This, the change to this, if I'm not mistaken, was mostly to kind of open up the, this parking to allow for the public because currently, the public can't park there. So, if we send this back to committee or if we don't pass this, the public has not been able to really park there since January 1. Because when we passed this legislation originally, there was a very large faux pas in it, something that we all missed. And this corrects that. So, this is why this is important to fix this. Ms. Stansfield spoke at the Infrastructure Committee and said there's still more work that needs to be done. And perhaps what Alderman Dowd brought up is that more work. There's more tweaks that need to get done. I do not disagree with it. I've seen those emails. I've been contacted as well. My fear, my anxiety is if we do not pass this or we do not at least pull out and say we kill everything that has happened so far, then we're going to keep that garage closed to the public. And we have a very large Performing Arts Center there and we have a parking garage that is remaining empty. The way that this process is happening, unlike in the past, a elite lessee or whatever the proper term is, is not given a specific parking space. They are just given the ability to park there. So, that means that when a person goes in to park, they can park in an available space. So, you don't, so if the lessees are not using or whatever, there, it's going to be done that. So, I hope that we do pass this if it needs to be tweaked. So be it. We all have our own voice and we all need to be heard. But we do need to pass something to make sure that that garage is back open to the public.
Alderman Clemmons?
Thank you. So, I have heard concerns from a lot of, a lot of folks downtown. And, and it, the number-one concern came from the fact that the upper parts of the garage were closed and that they were only open to lessees. And so, that, this addresses that portion of it. The second and probably more critical complaint that I have gotten is the, is actually related to the leased spaces and not necessarily the hourly parking. And one of the restaurant owners explained to me that the cost of the permit went up. There's actually a business owner that explained to me that the cost of the permit went up exponentially, almost twice what it was. And I think that's where we need to maybe look at in the future and to bring back what we are charging for the leased prices. Because from what I understand, the, the cost benefit of buying a leased spot has become unattainable for some of the smaller businesses downtown. And so, but that is a separate issue from this. And Alderman Clay is exactly correct when she says that if this were to go back, the upper portions of the garage would remain closed off, for lack of a better term, to anyone who did not have a lease. So, I think I agree with, with what's being said about the concerns of the cost. But I think the cost where folks at least have expressed to me has to do with the leases and not the hourly. Because anybody that I have talked to and I explain the hourly rate, they say, "Well, it would be nice if it was free, but I understand, you know, 75 cents an hour." When you compare it to Portsmouth or Concord or Manchester, it's actually pretty inexpensive. So, that's been that conversation and then it's dived into, but let me tell you about the leases. So, I, I hope that we can move this legislation forward and I will work with Ms. Stansfield and on, on maybe tweaking some of those leases on another ordinance.
I'm going to recognize Liz Hanam, the Economic Development Director. She's got, got her hand up and she's been very patient.
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm everything that was said about these, this legislation. This doesn't have anything to do with the leases. Those have already been approved and are in place. And so, no one can park there on nights and weekends for things like the shows at the Performing Arts Center. So, this would, would, this is a response to the businesses in the area that have notified us of an issue that we created. So, I'm hoping that this will pass.
Thank you. Alderman Kelly?
Thank you. So, I think that, I appreciate that some of the frustrations for parking are being alleviated by this. My concern is that we are hearing, at least I personally have heard from multiple businesses, feeling like they didn't have input on what's going on with parking. Now, I know this has been an ongoing conversation, lots of studies. I've lived through it as long as I've been on this board. But I have requested that we do a business forum to talk about parking. I don't, I'm not going to get in the way of this, but I do think that there are legitimate concerns. We've reduced the amount of parking downtown with Park Renaissance, with leasing out parts of both Elm Street and the, the High Street Garage. So, I think we do need to have some business input here. And so, I look forward to having that conversation and continuing to iterate on, on this.
Alderman Lopez?
I think we also need to make it very clear for snow emergencies to residents that are living in nearby streets that are not allowed to park on the street, that they can use it as snow emergency parking. Because I received a lot of concern that they couldn't park there, but they also were getting their cars towed because they couldn't park there. So, that's something we need to be very attentive to. I, I love the business people and the restaurants and the Performing Arts Center, but if we're asking people in narrow streets to move their cars off the streets and we're making them walk through a blizzard to and from their house to do it, the least we can do is make sure they have a place to park. So, I think that's a major consideration we have to keep in mind, especially when we start leasing this out to housing programs that we're developing around it and then sort of halfway through, if not two-thirds of the way through the project, start saying, "Oh, remember when you asked about parking? This is what our actual plan is and we're going to take away the parking spaces that were available to the public for the emergency because we can make money off of them and charge them when there isn't an emergency." Great. But when there is an emergency, people need to be able to put their cars somewhere. So, I think that's a very important consideration. I appreciate Alderman Dowd's comments as well. I have heard from several businesses downtown, including, we've all just heard from Greater National and Cravings is another one where there's specific populations that have specific needs that our parking revenue aspirations are starting to negatively impact. So, Director Stansfield, I've already, I've already asked her to have a meeting with at least one business. I think a parking forum is a very good idea and we should approach that. But I don't think we should hold this up. I think we need to fix it as soon as we can and we just need to keep doing our work.
Alderman Thibodeau?
Thank you, Madam President. I mean, I, I saw the, the letters from the businesses and, I mean, I am concerned that if I'm, you know, a worker there, employee, and I'm not making a lot of money now, I'm almost paying $50 a week if I want to park in the garage. That's concerning, but the, the thing is, if we don't do it, they can't park there. If we do do it, they got to spend the money. So, I am concerned about that. Sounds like the Board is going to pass it. So, again, to Alderman, Alderwoman Kelly's point, I'm not going to stand in the way of it, but I just don't like the fact that because we made a mistake, it's either this or this and there's no in-between. So, hopefully at some point, there will be an in-between or there will be something to help support the employees that are working in that area as well. So, there's a lot of things, it sounds like, that, you know, to Alderman Lopez's points and some of the other points that were made, that need to be still talked about and discussed. I just hope if we do a parking forum, it is very specific as opposed to, oh, just let's talk about parking in the city. If it's not specifically to one area of the city or one concern, you start getting all this stuff and you don't end up actually doing anything. So, hopefully, we would have one that was specific to, you know, downtown or in that section of downtown or the parking garages or whatever. So, so I guess I will support it reluctantly tonight to, for Alderman Clemmons.
Alderman Moran?
Thank you, Madam President. Through you, I have just a question to Director Hanam, if that's okay?
Yes.
Director Hanam, where do the city vehicles park in the garage? Because I, I received a complaint over the weekend from a constituent, but I wasn't sure if it was accurate or not. And since we're on the subject, they were parking in the Elm Street Garage and they thought there were too many city vehicles taking up primo spots on the first and second floor and it interrupted their ability to go to surf in the Performing Arts Center conveniently.
So, that, yeah, Liz Hanam, Economic Development Director. So, the, the first floor on the east side of the parking garage is city vehicles. On the west side of the garage is open to the public as well as, if this passes tonight, the second and third floors will also be available.
Alderman Moran?
Is it possible to move those city vehicles up to a few levels to leave the parking for residents and business owners downtown and their customers? Or is it too much to ask someone?
That would definitely be a big policy change, but it's, we can certainly look into it.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Dowd?
Yeah, I'm not going to hold this up. I'm going to vote for this tonight, but, and I appreciate Alderman Clemmons. I'm going to vote for this tonight, but, and I appreciate Alderman Clemmons meeting with Liz Hanam as soon as possible to come up with a solution that, that is workable for the, the people that work in the vicinity of the garage. And I know the city vehicles we're probably talking about, I'm not sure if they're vehicles with a sticker on the side, but I know most of the employees in City Hall, I believe, park in the garage. So.
Would you like me to respond?
Director Hanam?
Yeah. So city, city staff's personal vehicles are required to be on the second floor and above. So only the city-owned vehicles are on that first floor. And they're, they're just a few of them in that little kind of darker area where the EV chargers are.
You all set, Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan?
Thank you. I'm going to vote for this ordinance tonight, but since we're all talking about it and we were talking about moving the previous ordinance to the infrastructure a little bit later, maybe it would be a good idea in a future infrastructure meeting that we have that parking forum. We invite some businesses down here and we clear, clear the agenda and we just have a, a parking discussion and square that away. And at least, you know, maybe not come up with any firm ordinance, but at least have a good direction with input from the folks down there and, and come up with some legislation that, that we can move forward with and makes everybody happy.
Parking forums seems to be the flavor of the night, so.
Love parking forums.
Alderwoman Kelly?
A couple of things. I think I appreciate the idea of having it in infrastructure, but I think with businesses downtown and their different times, we should try to see what we can accommodate so as many can come as possible. I know that some of the people who sent us letters today said, "I can't be there tonight. I, you know, I run a restaurant that's open until 1:00 or whatever." So I think we should consider that. And I just want to make a comment, not going to belabor the point here. I'm sure I can talk to Director Hanam about it, but the area of the garage in which the previous speaker was talking about by the yoke does have five city employee spots and I thought it was excessive as well. So it's not over by the EV chargers. And I think we should look at those and whether we can at least say after 7:00, you know, open to the public or something. Because I had the exact experience. I was going to a show in Surf and there was zero places to park.
And she did not have any consent?
I did not. Not to you.
Alderman Kelly walks if she has to.
The motion before us is for final passage of ordinance 2447 as amended. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Ordinance 2547 is declared duly adopted as amended. New business resolutions?
First reading of R-25-127 approving the cost items of a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Nashua, New Hampshire and UAW Local 2322 Clerical and Technical Unit from July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2029, in authorizing related transfers.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Lopez, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Tebow, Alderman Cleary and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of R-25-128 approving the cost items of a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Nashua, New Hampshire and UAW Local 2322 Professional Unit from July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2029, in authorizing related transfers.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Tebow, Alderman Cleary, Alderman Dowd and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of R-25-129 relative to the supplemental appropriation of $30,885.53 of fiscal year 2025 unanticipated revenue into Fund Number 7024 opioid abatement expendable trust fund.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Moran, Alderman Tebow, Alderman Cleary, Alderman Dowd and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee and schedule a special Board of Alderman public hearing on Monday, February 24th, 2025, in the Aldermanic Chamber at 7:00 PM.
First reading of R-25-130 relative to the acceptance of $61,120 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services Exotic Species Program into authorize the transfer of matching funds.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Timmons, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Clemmons, Alderwoman Kelly and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of R-25-131 relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $30,000 from the New Hampshire Charitable Foundation's Community Grant Program into Arlington Street Community Center Grant Activity ASCC Community Events.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Moran, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Senate, Alderman Tebow, Alderman Cleary, Alderman Dowd, Alderwoman Kelly and myself. And myself. And Alderwoman Timmons. Wake up over there.
I was sneezing.
Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee and schedule a special Board of Alderman public hearing on Monday, February 24th, 2025, in the Aldermanic Chamber at 7:00 PM.
First reading of R-25-132 relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $28,000 from the New Hampshire Charitable Foundation into Arlington Street Community Center Grant Activity ASCC Preschool Readiness Activity Group.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Timmons, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Senate, Alderman Tebow, Alderman Cleary, Alderman Dowd, Alderwoman Kelly and myself. Given its first reading, I will assign that to the Budget Review Committee and schedule a special Board of Alderman public hearing on Monday, February 24th, 2025, in the Aldermanic Chamber at 7:00 PM. New business ordinances?
First reading of O-25-048 regarding parking for tenants of 14 Court Street.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Timmons, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Sullivan, Alderman Tebow, Alderman Cleary, Alderman Dowd. Given its first reading, I'll send that to the Committee on Infrastructure.
First reading of O-25-049 authorizing stop signs on Lovell Street at its intersection with Chestnut Street.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Moran, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Senate, Alderman Lopez. Given its first reading, I'll send that to the Committee on Infrastructure.
First reading of O-25-050 prohibiting playing hockey at the Robey Park Ice Skating Rink.
Alderman Sullivan?
Thank you. Madam President, I'm going to kindly ask that we remove this as a first reading tonight off the agenda. I spoke with DPW. We're not ready for this ordinance to move forward at this time. Need some more time to tighten it up.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, period for general public comment. We have two people that have signed up. The first one is Bob Keating.
Hello, my name is Bob Keating, five Colburn Woods. And I'm speaking on behalf of Sleeping at Elm Street. There are three colleagues from Grand Estate Organizing Project also present and also members of the Voices of Major Drive. I submitted previously, two weeks ago, signatures 60-plus and I submitted another dozen from, from those groups in regards to this issue. I spoke last time about this and I, and I want to reiterate again that our, our intention is, say, this is very good that we've opened up this place, but I continue to hear that this fear that somehow this will unravel as we're speaking about something that we think is going to improve. And the issues that we're speaking about are internal, meaning they relate to what is happening at the, the warming station itself. So having said that, that sleeping, as all of us can imagine, is that if you have a place open from 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM, whatever your rules, that people are likely to fall asleep in whatever position. And I've been there a number of times and that is so. People sleep and at times people, people sleep lying down in chairs and they just fall asleep. So that's going to, you know, to occur on this. Now, how we got to this position, despite many months of pursuing, I still don't have an answer about why we, and this is the second year we've done this. Last year it was at the Unitarian Universalist Church, which I am a member of. I assumed it was because the space was, you know, was a problem and explained that to people. And I was inaccurate because I didn't do my homework. I just assumed that and I found out. So I think that, that I think we have an opportunity here. The Fire Marshal has been very responsible. I spoke to him in December and I spoke to him again yesterday. And despite conversations, nobody has asked the Fire Marshal to look into the issue of what it would need at Elm Street. He's forwarded materials from the State's Fire Marshal's office and it's clearly Elm Street is a very, very big place. So I just ask for, for this board and for the, you know, to the mayor to take the next step. Contact the Fire Marshal, ask him to look at, at this. I think it's good for the clients, the guests. I think it's good for people who are working there, who work overnight. And they're the people that have to, to deal with people who want to sleep and, you know, the tensions of that. I think it's good for the community in that, that in all likelihood, people will be staying indoors more rather than wandering outside. So, so that's it. Thank you for your hearing this and I hope that people move on it. Thank you.
Tonya Nysley? Can you give your name and address for the record, please?
Hi, I'm Tonya Nysley. I'm from 83 Major Drive. I just want to reiterate with Bob, maybe in a different way. We don't have, one, a lot of affordable housing. So, and a lot of the, the residents that are staying at the homeless shelter, unfortunately, a lot of them are on social security for whatever reasons. And when we keep taking away spaces for human beings that don't necessarily make, you know, 80 or 100% of the area AMI, what options are we leaving them? If you're making a very limited income, you could only afford a hotel for maybe two nights and, and then you're pretty much, you know, surviving for the rest of the week. So the warming stations are pretty much the only options that some of these people have to have a safe, warm environment. And they need to also be productive human beings because they have doctor's appointments that they still have to go to. They still have to go and get meals and they still have to walk around the whole city for the next day. And if you're in a sitting position or not allowed to rest for the entire night, your brain isn't going to be able to function properly the next day in order to perform any of those tasks in a responsible manner. So I just feel like whatever that we can do, whatever the zoning is or whatever the responsibility is to put cots and allow people to actually sleep in there, I feel like would be not only important for the people, but also for the community members because people who don't get a lot of sleep and a lot of rest and don't feel safe, don't act responsibly and they're not very calm people. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Remarks by members of the board? I'm going to start over here tonight.
Okay. So we've had a lot of interesting conversations this week at City Hall. I've been really encouraged by everyone coming together and, and speaking about, you know, things that are uncertain and how we're going to move forward. So thank you to the mayor for being willing to bring the budget forward sooner so that we can look at that. I'm going to keep this part short, but I just want to encourage everybody. If you're feeling uncertain, if you're feeling, you know, scared, worried, that's what we're here for. We are representatives of the people and, you know, our, what we do here is dictated by what you are seeing or what you need. So reach out to us.
Alderwoman Cleary?
Thank you, Madam President. I, I want to echo my colleague's words relative to the budget. I think there was a, a lot of good conversation last night and I want to thank the President for her strong request to have the, the budget brought forward early and the mayor's response to that. I appreciate that, that work. And getting a bare bones budget of just numbers without all the pretty pictures and so on is fine. We can get the pretty pictures later and, and all the words that go along with it. I think at least having something to start and so that the, that the public can start looking at it and, you know, pulling it apart, doing whatever it is that they want to do, that, that's good. But at least they can hear it, we can get the hearings. And I think it was even commented that we can bring the, the, the different departments in and give them the time to speak and breathe. And I think that's a, a good thing. I also want to send my condolences out to the family of Don LeBron, who was an alderman here in the past. He was also a colleague of mine up in Concord. He served both here in the city as well as in the state. I don't know how long Don was in either position, but I, I served with him for, I think, actually, I served up there with him for six years. So I did not serve with him here, I think. My colleague from Ward Five was in his seat when I, when I came here, so. And I'd also like to wish my, my husband, who is, will be having a birthday on this coming Sunday, a very happy birthday and to all of those out there, happy Valentine's Day. Thank you.
Alderman Tebow?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. I don't have a lot to say, but I, I'm concerned that we still have people that don't know what's going on with the shelters as far as, as the laying down stuff. The, I don't know if that's not, the city itself is not giving a clear explanation. I know, I think I heard Alderman Moran talking before about legislation which would, by the time that got done, we would be into, I believe, late spring probably. And there would be no, at that point, yeah, removed. So I, I, I think it's a zoning issue if I remember correctly because it's a school, technically still a school property, even though it's our property. And it's considered a school, so I think that's the problem. But if the mayor, after my remarks, could, could talk to that, that would be great. Just so people know, and, and if there is anything we can do, what could we do to solve that? Because it does seem like it keeps coming up and we're not really moving on anything, if there's anything we can actually do. And then the last, the one last thing is, and Alderman Cleary reminded me that I should say this. My wife's birthday on Friday on Valentine's Day, so happy birthday, happy Valentine's Day. So I'll get that out. But if the mayor could talk to the, the warming station?
Mayor?
Yeah. There is an explanation. There, well, first, there is a housing, a building code issue, but that's not, that could be resolved. The staff, the people who work there and those who supervise them do not favor this approach. I mean, I know Bobby Bagley, Director of Public Health and Community Services, has been over there numerous nights working. I mean, she's actually working there. They're getting 20-some people a night, maybe 30, and that's about all they can handle with the staff they're able to hire. It is a low barrier shelter. Meaning you can't actually be using substances there, but if you walk in and you've been drinking or whatever, you are allowed in. That is not the case at the other shelters. It is not the case at the soup kitchen, it, over here where they do some of this. They have the regular clients, but also, you know, an overnight thing. And it is not the case at the mission. Rules are much stricter. So the staff believes if they open this up to sleeping, people who don't really want to deal with the rules at these other places are going to move and sleep here. You know, sleep at Elm Street and that they will, they will be unable to handle the additional customers. So, I mean, I, you know, if you talk with the people who work there and, you know, Ms. Bagley and everyone, I mean, they are very compassionate. They give of themselves a person. They give of themselves personally to make this shelter, this warming shelter, a reality, but they just don't think, and they believe in the low barrier situation. But they, because we have other higher barriers, higher rules shelters in the city, they think people would move, and I believe they know what they're talking about. And they would then be overwhelmed and really, the place, they wouldn't be able to even keep it open. So, that's, at least for this year, that's what they believe, and I'm sure if you wanted to invite them in, they could come in and, you know, repeat more, with more personal knowledge than what I have, but would they give you the same story?
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Alderman Senate.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Along the same topic, I do just want to respond that, I can't speak for everybody, but I know a couple of us have made an effort to understand the situation better. I think Alderman Moran could attest that we are probably engaged in almost daily, at least, back and forth with community development, Fire Marshal's office, Building Department, and Public Health, trying to understand the nuance and the complexities of what would be required in order to allow a sleeping situation in this warming station to occur. The information that this is not desired is new to me, and maybe a little frustrating because those parties have been involved in these conversations, and that would have been helpful information as we pursue this. But that being said, I'm not going to stop asking those questions. I am going to continue to pursue that line of questioning because I am of the opinion, excuse me, that by having a multitude of high barrier shelters where people can go in and become comfortable and sleep for the evening, and turning to those who may be living in situations that prevent them from being able to access those spaces, to me, that conveys a message that, well, you've done something wrong, and you don't deserve these amenities, and I can't abide that. I can't abide the notion that because somebody is suffering from substance use, that they cannot have the same comforts that the rest of us take for granted as human beings. And so, I'm going to continue that line of questioning. We heard tonight that the Fire Marshal has not been directly asked what would be involved in preparing that building. I'm going to ask that question, and I'm going to continue to pursue this as long as I'm sitting in this role. Thank you.
Oh, may I respond a little bit more? The staff, you know, that Ms. Bagley and company, they agree with you that it's unfortunate that the, some of the other shelters are so high barrier, because they're frustrated by the fact that people get kicked out, and people are not allowed in, and, you know, they think, you know, I'm not involved directly, but that, you know, a minor violation of the rules, and someone's back on the street, and all that kind of thing. They don't, they don't agree with that approach, but that is the approach of organizations that we do not control. So, and I actually have spoken with some of them about this over the months, you know, as to why people get put back on the street and that kind of thing. So, but, the reality is that the people staffing our warming shelter are confronted with a situation where they, they offer a low bar barrier situation, which is, you know, the only one, and they have the concern that I expressed.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. Well, hopefully, hopefully, we can continue the conversation about the warming shelter, and I realize realistically that probably nothing would happen between now and the end of the, of this season before it gets warm. But I think I applaud the efforts of Alderman Senate and Moran on this, and the citizens who spoke, because I think, you know, I'm hoping that there is some kind of solution that we can do, and work out the concerns there, because it would be nice to allow people to be able to sleep. So, that's what I have to say about that. I did want, on the, back on the parking, topic of parking, I have gotten several complaints about the Spring Street lot, and if you go in there, the signage is very confusing because it says permits, I think it says something like permits required at all times or something like that. I want to clarify for the public, anyone can park there. So, it's a three-hour limit in that lot, and there is a pay station, and every single space in that lot has a number, and if you look under where it says permits required at all times, there is a number, and you can take that number and go to the space, the pay station and pay. I spoke with Jill Stansfield and the Parking Department, and they are working on new signage for that lot to make it more clear, and the new signage will say three-hour limit except for permit holders. So, that makes it more clear that anybody can park there, but if you're a permit holder, you can park there, you know, I think, I believe it's 24/7 or whatever your permit allows. So, so we're working on that, and we're working on similar signage, which will come forward for the garages now that we've passed the ordinance tonight, and so just to make things more clear. But I wanted to put that out there, that no, the public can park in Spring Street, you know, so just to make that clear. I think it's great that we want to have more conversations on parking. I think, I just did a quick calculation of the seventy-five cents an hour and what it would cost an employee on a monthly basis if they were to park there for a nine-hour day. You figure half an hour before your shift, half an hour after, right? And it's expensive. It's a hundred and forty-six twenty-five a month that you would pay if you were to pay that meter. So, that's, that's a, that's a hundred and forty-six dollars out of your paycheck. So, I think we can do better than that. I think we can do better for our employees downtown, and so I look forward to working with the, with the Parking Manager, with Director Hanham, with the rest of the Board of Alderman here, to try to come up with a solution that maybe balances some of that down for our employees downtown. They deserve that. That being said, in the interim, the good news is, is that hopefully, very soon, the mayor signs that legislation, and we can get people parking in the rest of the garages. So, I'll leave my comments there on the positive note, and look forward to future conversations. Thanks.
So, Alderman Clemmons, is, for these parking forums, we could probably set them up so that we addressed, I don't know who brought it up, maybe Alderman Tebow?
Alderman.
Okay, oh, okay. You know, the first meeting would be parking garages. The second meeting could be mains, I mean, you know, have a series of them so that this one issue doesn't get lost in the shuffle.
Right.
So, I think that the parking forum is a really good idea and something we should pursue. Who's next? Alderman Sullivan, you all set?
I'm good.
Okay, Alderman Lopez.
I want to also express condolences to Alderman LeBron's family. I had not heard that he had passed, but I always used to tease him when he was on the board about how his email signature was like two and a half pages long because of all the titles he had, and he would say, "Those are the things that I do," and we kind of went back and forth with it a couple of times until he clarified, "He's telling people everything that he does so they know where they can find him and what he's accountable to." And I took that to heart, and that was why I started running around with local politician hats, because I wanted the community to know, you know, we look like civilians or whatever, but at the same time, if they want to ask us about parking or those types of things, then they should, they should build a locust. I've long been an advocate for the mayor wearing a top hat. So, I just wanted to express my condolences there, and then I also wanted to wish happy birthday to Alderman Cle's husband and Alderman Tebow's wife as well. Regarding a lot of the downtown discussions, there have been a number of decisions or communications by the city that have been definitely interpreted by the public as heavy-handed. You know, the parking, the pending parking legislation regarding the Court, 14 Court Street residents, as an example, is in answer to poor communication, I think, as is the Pine Street issue, and as is probably the eminent domain legislation that is tabled, where engaging stakeholders and having a discussion with them instead of sending letters to them, or emails to them, or directives to them, is much more productive. So, I would encourage us to start focusing on that. And in a similar vein, regarding the...
That's not true.
Attorney Bolton, if you want to clarify?
That is not true.
What's not true?
We had discussion with the owner of that property.
You're talking about Four Water Street?
In person, yes.
Okay. Attorney Bolton, has there been any communication besides those discussions?
I don't know what...
Has there been any emails sent or assessments done or anything like that?
May I answer your question, sir?
Well, you challenged what I said.
Because I can't listen to you while you're interrupting me.
Why don't I answer it? So, yes, there were, there have been lengthy discussions over a year, and an agreement was reached at one point to provide a forty thousand dollar patio in exchange for a easement over maybe, you know, dry land about as big as this desk, you know, and a bunch of land in the river. And the day for the closing came up, and the, you know, he's a businessman, I mean, I know the guy, like him, so, you know, but he decided he wanted something additional. So, the city went ahead and got an appraisal, which has come in recently. The number on the appraisal is zero, zero. And, but, under state law to, for, and this, you know, we can discuss with the committee and all this, but we could give you the details, more details regarding the discussions, maybe in a non-public, because it is negotiations over real estate. But the appraisal is zero, and, but there's a state law that says if you take property worth zero, you have to give a seventeen thousand dollar convenience fee. Fine. We're still good with the forty thousand dollars. We'd love to build the patio, it would help him. We think this project really enhances the value of Four Water Street. We'd love to still build the patio, the offer still stands, but the question is, should we give a hundred thousand of value to a property owner when the value is actually zero? Or at least that's what our appraisal says. So, the idea that there haven't been discussions, or we just blew the guy off, or, you know, we, it's been the legal department, Ms. Hanham, you know, a lot of people have been involved, but the idea that he was just blown off and treated with whatever, you know, a cold shoulder is not accurate. There were many...
I would describe this as...
Negotiations went on for like a year, and an agreement was ultimately reached.
Was the agreement before or after we did the eminent domain legislation? Were the conversations after that?
The agreement was before.
So, there were plenty of conversations since we introduced this legislation, which I was asked to sponsor and not briefed on any of this.
Who did you ask to be briefed from?
I have to ask you to tell me everything.
Now, but really, we, you know, we, we would like to...
I can't read your mind, sir.
Then stop trying to.
We would like to close the deal, and the appraisal just came in. There's a question of whether we really should be talking about this in an open session, because to some degree, it prejudices the city's negotiating, but I think that, given the appraisal, given a forty thousand dollar offer, I mean, it's hard to say that the city has not been fair in terms of what has been proposed. So, I'm sure the discussions, well, I hope the discussions will continue, but the, what is it, a resolution? The resolution regarding the eminent domain was only introduced after there was a deal reached, but it wasn't closed, and it, further contacts didn't seem to get anywhere, and it didn't seem reasonable to give forty thousand dollars plus sixty thousand dollars of parking benefits for something that didn't seem like it was worth very much, and then an appraisal came in at zero. So, you know, we're trying to, the people involved are trying to protect the interests of the city and trying to be fair to the owner at the same time, and, you know, maybe that's hard to, it's hard to reach an agreement that satisfies both of those objectives.
Well, I don't want to have any further discussions that might compromise anything legally. I didn't ask for that discussion. I expressed my opinion that the city is at times heavy-handed.
And you didn't know what you were talking about.
And you decided to show me you weren't heavy-handed with this.
We weren't.
But I'm not trying to be, I'm just trying...
You made your point.
I'm not, I'm not, can, you know, in any way criticizing the fact that you've asked about this, but I think that, you know, the city has been, in that instance, fair in terms of what's been discussed and what's been offered, and still is willing to try to make a deal.
I think everybody ultimately is, as long as we can actually have conversations about it.
Yes.
And I think that's important for, in general, when we're making a bunch of changes to downtown, making sure that we're engaging all of our stakeholders, not one specific stakeholders, but as a general term, to make sure that they feel like they're being heard and they're able to express themselves too. And then, in a similar vein, I think the Elm Street conversation, I have asked Director Bagley to present at the Human Affairs Committee an update. I don't necessarily want to continually tell her how to run things or what to do, and I think it's important for us as aldermen, when our city staff are expressing what they think we need to be doing, and they're giving us their advice, we're at least acknowledging it. I have also been in touch with Director Bagley with regards to the shelter situation, but I think it was presented very clearly to the board initially that a warming station, a awake cold weather emergency warming station, would be an awake cold weather emergency warming station. And we didn't get it done as early as we all pledged that we would, and we recognized at the time that we were moving things forward that we were making some progress, so I think it's important to not act as though we didn't walk into this with that understanding. I think all along, the request and the need that's been identified by Public Health has been for more emergency shelter capacity, and a low barrier emergency shelter does allow people to sleep overnight, but it also includes multiple levels of care or encounter, so that people who are not necessarily going to follow rules that are structured, that also require a higher level of personnel and staffing capability and supply, are able to do something to keep warm and out of the elements. But I think it's fairly practical. Anybody here could probably draw the, or connect the dots, that if you want to have people sleep on cots, you have to provide the cots. If you're going to have people who have acute needs sleeping on the cots, you're going to have to manage and maintain the cots and the people, and that means you're going to have to have different credentialing and different qualifications. A lot of the other organizations that we rely on to shelter people aren't even shelters. There are several that are rescue missions and have a different purpose, but they're filling a need. There are some that are emergency shelters that are running on a specific mission or purpose, and so not everybody can fit every single category or fit in every single bed. Where there's a gap, and we have a need for people who don't fit into the domestic violence model, or the family systems model, or the individual models that we have at work now, the argument has been for years that we need to step up and start filling that need. So, the steps to doing that aren't necessarily to criticize or target a program that's only a couple of, only running for a couple of weeks out of the year, instead of actually stepping forward and saying, "We represent organizations and institutions that could contribute to a more permanent solution." The city's been very... The city's been very clear that it's looking for shelter, a shelter solution, but we don't have property that fits the need, we don't have a final funding system that would meet it. We need stakeholders, we need people who are going to contribute, not necessarily organize petitions and go inspect shelter situations or warming stations, because they feel very strongly about something when people who are actually running it and trying to maintain at least some positive step are saying there are other considerations. So I think if we want to have a forum on that, then I would definitely attend that. I would also say that there is a forum very, very regularly, every month, that Alderman could be attending, which is the continuing care. And there are other city-run efforts that Alderman could be attending, where they could be involved in, you know, outreach and those types of things. So if people have a strong passion for this, then I say, become part of the organizing and start tackling the problems that are, that are being presented by our own staff. Thank you.
Anyone else over here? Alderman Moran?
That is a very tough act to follow. But I echo several of my colleagues' comments regarding the warming station. I don't think there'll be a resolution in regards to the ability to sleep anytime soon. And that is the first time I'm hearing about the staff perception of what, the reasons why they can't have someone sleep. I have a long email back and forth with, I think, very high-level senior directors in every department, and that was the first I'm hearing of it. But I appreciate that frontline staff sharing that with the mayor, and not the Board of Aldermen for some reason. That helps me understand, you know, burnout and other aspects of what could be happening down there. They don't fully comprehend them. Like my colleague to my right, I'm also trying to figure out a time to volunteer to get the training done so I can actually volunteer there as well, so I can get a better feel and understanding of what the needs are of the community. But I do feel overall, there should be a place for people to sleep. I don't think it's an academic debate. This isn't, this isn't academia. You know, people are cold, whether you're drinking or not, you've got to lay down and sleep. I mean, it's, I feel like, when I have like a social work student and I'm talking to their professor, that, "Well, did you apply this theory and this step, one, two, three?" "No, of course not, this person was going to kill themselves." Why? We're not talking about academic debate here, we're talking about there's an immediate need, it needs to be addressed, and we have to allow people to sleep. And how we get there isn't going to be a quick fix. I just wish there would be more open dialogue regarding the direct staff's concerns and needs and understanding of the issue, so members of the board can have a better comprehensive understanding. And I've had several prominent leaders in the, in the community reach out to me who work in the nonprofits and the humanitarian sector. And we, that's the conversation, is what you do, can you do to make something sustaining? And just like my colleague from Ward Four mentioned, you develop partnerships and find alternative solutions when you can. So I do appreciate what they're doing at Elm Street. Can it be better? Yes. Do we need to have like this weird academic thing about everything has to be best practice, everything? No. Because the person on the street who needs to sleep and is cold doesn't care about those aspects of planning. They just want to be able to get in there and lay down. Which I, I'm confident someone's laying down at some point, because it's impossible to be at 3:00 in the morning and not, not off. So I look forward to continuing that discussion, along with my colleague from Ward Seven, to find out what can be done, if not now, but later on, this reopens next year. But it's, I think, beholden upon us not to let the pedal up, keep the pedal down, especially with advocates in the community, to not let it go away, especially when the warm weather comes and it becomes out of sight, out of mind until the fall. All right. Oh, yes. And another aspect that got brought up, public comment, is whether, you know, the median income type housing that could be brought into the, into the city. And with that, I know, I want to bring up that Planning and Economic Development on March 18th. We're going to have Director Cummings come and present the two proposals for the Elm Street Middle School. One is very heavy on affordable housing, one is smaller than that. So I think it would be good for members, the public here, to come to that meeting to express your views. Will be posted publicly too, ahead of time, so you can get an idea what developments will look like. Also, I wanted to thank the legal department. I know after what just happened, it might not want to...
I received direct legal instruction.
But it would have come out tonight for a first reading, but I couldn't get to it because last week I had a family tragedy that distracted me for a bit. But the legal department did some, Dory in particular, did some deep research on if we can ban something called kratom here in the city, whether it's a ban or putting an age requirement on it. And I encourage everyone, before it even comes to the board, to research what kratom is, because it's killing our children, it's making people become addicted to an over-the-counter stimulant. Whether you're, if you're an adult and you want to take it, you know, that's their problem. You can do whatever you want in the privacy of your home if you're an adult. But at minimum, if we can put an age restriction on it so children don't have access to legal drugs where they can get high on, I hope everyone takes the time to do some research on that before it comes in front of you in the next couple of weeks.
Great, that's all I have. Thank you.
Could you say that, what is that?
Kratom.
Kratom.
It acts very similar to meth.
Oh.
Did I get that right?
It's with a K.
Okay. You all set, Alderman Moran?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam President. I never heard of kratom eedom. I guess I'm old and that's the first time I heard that, of that terminology, as well as crip walking. Never heard of that one either, so. I will look that up and read all about kratom, huh?
Stimulant.
How you spell it?
K-R-A-T-U-M.
O-N.
O-N, thank you, sorry.
O-N, okay.
All set?
We don't know who the expert is. I'm trying not to use spell check anymore. So thank you to everyone who helps me correct my spelling.
Alderman Clemmons?
I just have a question through you to the previous, or to Alderman Moran. Is it, are the firms coming to that March 18th meeting as well? Or is it just Director Cummings coming?
So Director Cummings, during the process, didn't explain that there might be a requirement for them to come to be PDC. So because it wasn't part of the bidding process, he felt it was more appropriate for him to come and present. But the two developers will be at public sessions throughout the next six weeks, when they're scheduled to present to the public as well.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yeah, through you to the Chair of PDC, I think it would be very good if those firms could come to the meeting, because I think some of the Aldermen, myself included, have some very pointed questions that, that at least I would like to ask.
You know, and that was the reason for me inviting them. And then, so I will follow up with Director Cummings and clarify that the board would like to see the presenters there.
Thank you.
Committee announcements.
The Board of Health meet tomorrow at 12:30 here in Room 208. And you can ask Director Bobby Bagley those questions that were asked here that I heard a million times already. I'm very surprised that you were surprised. So I think going to the Health Committee meeting to ask those pointed questions will help you out a lot, because it wasn't new when the mayor was telling the chamber what is up. It just wasn't new to me. So maybe it's my fault that you guys didn't know about it, but I think going to the Health Committee meeting tomorrow, you can ask those questions directly to Director Bagley.
Alderman Sullivan?
Tomorrow morning, 9 o'clock, Room 208, Building Industrial Development Authority meets.
Okay. What else? Alderman Dowd?
Yeah, last night I gave out some complimentary copies of the expendable trust funds that we currently have. And we're going to have a special meeting on March 4th of the Budget Committee to go over the expendable trusts, so that we can get an idea of what we can do with them or not do with them. And so I would ask everybody to research them ahead of time. There are some that we can't change because they were put in place by law. There are others that are places where people can donate to. So there's some that we probably can't touch, but there are some that we can probably do something with. The other thing is that Donna has thankfully put out dates, set up dates for the Budget Committee for the FY '26 budget. We don't have who's going to be at those dates, but I'm going to put out the dates to the Budget Committee so you can sort of plan ahead and earmark those dates. But it will take a little while before we actually put out who will be there for those particular evenings.
Alderman Kelly?
Thank you. Personnel will have a special meeting this Thursday, taking up some of the business we were unable to get to at our very long meeting several weeks ago. So please join us, it'll be exciting.
Thank you. Alderman Lopez, and then Alderman Jody.
February 20th is the Human Affairs Committee meeting. I believe Alderman Kelly will have to chair that since I will be away. At most, I could Zoom in, but I can't chair a meeting if I'm Zooming.
Alderman Jody?
Could I just ask the Chairman of the Budget Committee, any handouts you're giving out to the Budget Committee, can you have them distributed to the full board?
No, he cannot. That would violate the law. Those same pages are in the budget book from last year, so if you have the budget book, or you could look it up online, you can find out the list.
I've mentioned this over and over and over again. You have to do your business at meetings. You cannot be sending each other documents relating to the business of the Board of Alderman. The public has to be here to see what you are doing. Please, we have people watching us, we get lawsuits every week on these sorts of violations. Please, stop doing that. It doesn't help to ask Donna to do it. It's still wrong. It'd be like asking her to rob a bank for you. Don't do it, please.
Could I, through you to Corporation Counsel, you know, could you explain to me why sending a list, which apparently is a public document in a budget book currently, why a page from that public document could not be sent? You know, it's not a discussion as to what we should do with it, it's just a, just a list with numbers on it.
Because the law specifically says you cannot communicate with each other on matters within your jurisdiction absent a meeting. You cannot do it by email or letter or any other way. Matters within your jurisdiction, which this clearly is, have to be done at meetings. I invite you to read RSA Chapter 91A. It's there.
Alderman Jody?
I accept what you're telling us. Would it be, you know, what if the Chairman of the Budget Committee, you know, at the next Board of Alderman meeting, brought the list that he's talking about and distributed it to us at the meeting? How would that go?
That would be perfectly all right.
Okay. Then could I ask him to do that?
You can ask him, yes.
Could you? Thank you.
Alderman Clemmons?
I move to adjourn.
The motion is to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Propose? We are adjourned at 9:34 PM. Thank you, everyone. Fair enough.